I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees, Village of Cambridge, November 28th, 2023, to order for our public hearing. Proof of posting, please.
The notice was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, the Village website, and published in the Cambridge News.
Okay, all right, thank you. On our agenda is the 2024 budget and the public hearing. And I see this, but it's different than what was in the packet.
Yeah.
So, pardon me. Can you hit the highlights of where the changes are?
We needed to come up with the funds to fund the library. And in doing so, I spoke with Brian at Ellers to ask what the best way would be to do that. And we did that through the levy limit worksheet. And so we had to make an adjustment through the debt service fund to meet the minimum for the library. And that library amount is $84,025 that were required to pay to Dane County for the library, actually, we're paying it to the library.
Yeah, Dane and Jefferson.
Right, Dane and Jefferson County, correct. So that's your difference.
Is that the change that we're talking about in culture and recreation?
Yes.
So, the original budget called for $58,707, and now it looks like that's up to $142,732.
And let me just say, this is the public hearing.
Okay.
So let's take any, if there's public comment, the Village Board can discuss the budget when we get to the agenda item.
All right, well, we'll open it up for public hearing on our budget.
Can I go?
Yes.
Do I have to state my name and my address?
It's good idea.
Just your name, yeah, who you're with.
My name is Jennifer Tremell, and I'm the president of the Village, the Library Board of Trustees. And so I just wanted to, it came to my attention that there was this issue with the funding of the library. And library funding is a critical issue for libraries of all sizes, and libraries face increased pressure to reduce their budgets while at the same time, demand for library services has continued to grow. This has led to a number of challenges for libraries, including reduced hours of operation, decreased staffing, reduction in collection size, fewer programs and services. We don't want this year's approved budget amount, which is the minimum appropriation that is statutorily required, to be precedent-setting. I would like to ask the Village Board to fully fund the library as originally submitted or at the very least match last year's funding amount of $105,000. The Village has historically shown strong fiscal support for the Cambridge Community Library and has funded over the minimum required amount. Fifty-six percent of Cambridge residents have library cards. In comparison, 36% of Deerfield residents have library cards, 32% Jefferson residents have library cards, and 45% of Fort Atkinson residents have library cards. This tells us that the library is a key part of the Cambridge community. Our library usage rates show a unique borrower demographic. Our retired community members are using the library at a rate that is high enough to be mentioned publicly at the Dane County Library Directors Meeting. Our library is much more than checking out books, it's a community resource. Our library supports community events, has a recycling program, provides children, youth, and adult programming, has a makerspace, a thriving chess club, as well as Wi-Fi and computer access to those who may not have the means to have these services in their homes. We want to ensure the continued existence of this vibrant community resource while making sure that the library employees have wages that are competitive, making sure we are able to add to our collections and have books and materials that our patrons want to check out and keep them coming back to the library. We also want to be able to keep the building up and running. Inflation has impacted our operating costs, which are electricity, water, phone, copier services, which is also a service to patrons. All that being said, I would like to respectfully ask for the fully funded, for the full funding as originally submitted for the library and minimally that the Village match last year's funding of $105,000. Thank you.
Are there any other individuals that would like to speak about the library?
Budget.
About the budget? Okay, I'm gonna, I don't see anybody, so fair warning.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that portion is adjourned. You okay, everybody? Okay, now I would like to call the Board of Trustees, our meeting of Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, to order, please. Roll call.
Trustee Brynig.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitwer.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
McNally.
Here. If we can stand and recite the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lisa, I trust this meeting has been properly posted?
Upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
All right. I will open this portion of the meeting up for any public comment, whether it's on the agenda or not. Anybody have anything? Okay, I'll close that. We'll move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, you've got a motion to second. Any discussion, concerns, issues, questions? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Reports, I'll start off here. I think there's three items I want to talk about. I'll get to the tough one here, do this one first. I think most of us may have been informed yesterday that Mary Jermel had passed on. She had been in poor health for quite a while. And there is, it's just, I think she's been Cleveland, with the Cleveland Clinic since, I don't know, maybe August, something like that. Mary is, you talk about a stalwart here in the Village of Cambridge. She's 75, just looking at this very quickly. She was born in November 21st, 2023. She was the only child. She went to school here from Cambridge High School, and she graduated from Mundalang College in 1971 with a BA in psychology. She was director of the Cambridge, Wisconsin Community Library. She attended Stout in 93, augmented her education, became a full-time family therapist, and she worked at the Cambridge, Wisconsin Counseling Clinic from 2005 to 2020. She's very instrumental in the construction of the community library, the Koshknon Prairie Historical Society, and past president of the Friends of the Cambridge Community Library. There is this, on Thursday, if anybody is interested, there's a visitation at Atardi Funeral Home from 4 until 6:00. There will be a visitation on Friday at the Grace Lutheran Church from 10 until 11:00. 11 o'clock will be the service, and there will be a graveside service as well, and that will be at 11:45. So Mary will be missed, and she was a remarkable woman and a real stalwart here in Cambridge.
We did order flowers on behalf of the Village Board and staff.
Yes. So, okay, a couple of other things here. I was coming back from Madison, decided to stop in and see what's going on with Westgate and Quick Trip today. I've been over there last week, I think it was last week. And the construction equipment will be pulled out next week, they'll all be done this week. And that will be staying like that then until the spring, when Quick Trip will resume construction. I didn't get too much information on the other two parcels for the...
The construction for, no, there's just one other besides the Quick Trip, but I didn't have information.
Right, okay. And then, on a much lighter note, this is a big weekend, and you ask why? Well, that's because Santa Claus is coming around. And he'll be here on Friday night. He's going to be swinging by to see the kids. I think last year, your wife was down there with your new baby.
Yep.
I don't know if you were there or not, I don't know.
That was at drill.
Okay.
I'll be here this time.
All right, okay. Well, Friday night, they'll be doing the, Santa Claus comes in, there's the tree lighting ceremony, the fire department will be there to drop them off in a fire truck. And then there's this cookie walk, and they've sold out. There are, I don't know how many bags of cookies, but I guess there are 200 or something like that, and everybody has them. There are some businesses, they go and buy extra cookies so that even if you didn't get a bag and pay for it, you could still get a cookie at the participating merchants. And so that's on Friday night, and then there's more going on on Saturday and...
Elf Shelf is here Friday and Saturday, and Cookie Walk here Saturday morning.
Right, right. Elf Shelf is open, I forget about this one. Is it open to the public or...
Yes, for kids to come shop.
All right, so all of you out there in TV land, if you want to come in...
They do crafts and have entertainment.
And the library is having an ornament decorating the library as well. So, once they shop at the Elf Shelf, they can stop into the library and make an ornament.
Good job. Are you going to have, are these ornaments going to be evaluated or judged?
No, they're for...
Just for fun.
For them to take them.
Okay, all right, okay. Joe, you saying something?
No.
All right, okay. So lots of things going on, and Christmas is here, and it's a wonderful time here in Cambridge. So if you have a chance, please stop in and participate, we'd love to hear about you. So that's my report. Can I move it now over to the library?
There's no...
Yeah, I don't know why I had it on here.
Well, we usually report at the second meeting of the month, but because it was a late Tuesday and early Wednesday, we met before the previous board meeting, so no update for us.
Okay.
Todd is not here tonight, so...
Yeah, I just, I just, I sent him a message earlier, just said, "Get well soon." And we can hold off on this, and I will mention it to him, but I thought the lights that he did, you know, with the, with the gang, the guys, they look fantastic, so that was well done. But I do have a question on a bill with that. Okay, move on to item D, Village Office Updates.
We've been working on the budget, water rate increases, working with Ellers on that. As you said, public works as the Christmas decorations up, they're finishing leaf pickup, preparing for snow, working with Town and Country on the final submittals for the bike trail grants, working with the attorneys and engineers on Koshknon Creek and the sampling. Pockets are being prepared for the April election. Trustees Hollenbeck, Brynig, and Whitwer are up for election. Those will be available in the office on Thursday, they can start being signed circulated on the first of December. So those will be available in the office, so starting notices and stuff for election already.
Yeah, seems like all we do is bounce from one to the next.
And this year, there will be four.
Four coming in in 2025?
In '24.
Twenty-four. Yeah, yeah. Is that including the primary? Okay, all right, questions for Lisa?
Lisa, do you know if the guys are going to do one more round of leaf pickup?
They were out yesterday.
Yeah, it's gonna be...
I don't know how successful they were because they're frozen.
Right.
But they were out trying to do some yesterday. So if the weather gets nice this week, they may go out one more time.
Okay, cool.
Lisa, you had a birthday this last week, half a birthday.
I did, thank you.
Happy birthday!
Thank you.
All right, happy birthday, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, I had a question on the leaves, picking up some things. Chuck for covering that one. And all the equipment is working fine, no problems with that? Nothing's been communicated with you? Okay, all right, moving on, item seven, Treasurer's Report. Let's start with bills.
Okay, first run of bills in the amount of $5,882.08. The second run, $3,217.07, for a total of $9,099.15.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, pay the bills, and set them out.
A second.
Okay, Chuck gets it. All right, questions? Just, I have one observation and one question. I'll give you the question. On page three, I noticed that there is a bill, a check for $1,575 for a water rate study to Lisa Trubatowski.
It's to Ellers.
Okay.
If she works. It's the work we've been doing with Ellers. Lisa's the contact person working on it there.
Okay, now, does that get covered?
It's billed to water. If you see the 500 number at the front there, it's billed to water.
All right, so it is going to be to water, all right. The only observation I had, I don't remember ever having a total check run that was less than $10,000.
I said, like Paul, I just said, being that the first of the month was on a Wednesday, our meeting is much later. So on the bill sheet, Tammy had sent out some of the checks she had to send out earlier because they would have been due before we could do them today and get them out.
All right, okay, any other questions? All right, we've got a motion and a second. I'll ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Whitwer.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Brynig.
McNally.
Yes. Now we'll go bouncing back to you, Tammy. Anything else as far as financial information, Treasurer's Report that you'd like to share?
Just, we're going to go over the budget and the levy limit worksheet.
Okay.
That's what I've been working on.
Have you, on the Finance Committee, have you seen these reports?
Not, I've seen the old version, not this version.
Okay.
I don't think I've seen this before, have I?
No, and I chose, I didn't, I didn't know when we would have time to be able to have a meeting to discuss it, and we can discuss things in the, I mean, that's an open meeting too. If we could, we'd just bring it to the Board and discuss it in front of the whole Board.
And it was just finalized today after getting final input from Brian at Ellers. So the final levy limit worksheet and the revised notice.
Culture, Recreation, and the Library Fund?
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, it's the same?
Yes.
Which one's easier to talk about, culture or the Library Fund?
It's the same thing.
Because you've got a revenue and you've got an expense.
Why don't you explain that?
Yeah, okay.
Are we into new business?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I miss that?
Yeah, I don't think we're there yet.
I thought...
This was, you know, Tammy brought this one up, so I don't know if you want to...
No, did we move on to the new business, the...
Did we, did we move to eight? Are we doing this?
No, no.
I didn't want to discuss it under the Treasurer's Report.
No, so, yeah.
Yeah, we'll wait till we get to the budget.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else then, Tammy, besides what you've given to us? Okay, now we'll move on to item eight, and we'll start with 8A, Village of Cambridge Resolution 2023-11, related to the 2024 Village Budget. So now we can talk about this, correct? All right. Billy, you had a question for...
I don't understand what changed, so maybe we can explain to you.
Okay, well, we needed to fund the library. It needed to be part of the budget.
It was part of the budget.
Part of the levy.
It needed to be part of the levy, it needed to be inside that levy.
I'm confused.
Because it was sitting outside the levy on its own.
We had that discussion at the point in...
When we were, when we met as, sorry, when we met at a committee, the library was down here.
And it still is.
Correct. And, but the, but the expense, the expense for what it was, was down here, but...
Okay.
Right.
The dollar amount was here, but there was nothing at the top that came out of the revenue section. It was just a separate line item that was listed out separately. It wasn't actually added or subtracted with our, I'll just say, general revenue dollars. And, and that, that was an error that we needed, we should have subtract, had to have subtracted that amount from up above somewhere, which we did not.
And as an expense, yeah.
Correct, as an expense.
The only number was for the library was $122,000.
Yes, it was. And to go back and step us, different way to say that, there were questions, is the library funding part of our levy or above the levy, outside the levy limit? It does have to be part. So these changes moved it into part of what we're levying for, it is not outside the levy limit. So that's when it was moved up. And, you know, shows on the bottom, but is part of the expenses as well.
Right, just, it shows it as a separate fund. So all three of those funds together, the general fund, the debt service fund, and the library fund, the total of that is what the levy limit is, that's our allowable levy limit. And I gave you each a copy of the levy limit worksheet, so you can kind of see how we came up with those numbers. And this is statutorily, that's how we come up with the levy limit worksheet. And so on line 10 of Section A, that's the allowable levy. So we needed to make an adjustment to cover the library. Well, they asked for like $122,000, and instead of going in, we had on the backside of the levy limit worksheet, line E, is where you have your debt service. We needed to adjust that so that we could include that portion of the library in there. That's the only part of the levy limit worksheet that we could do an adjustment on. We can go from a minimum amount to a maximum amount for our debt service, and that's the only place that we could take that from. So after talking with Brian at Ellers, since we were well within that limit, we could take that for the debt service. But we only wanted to take what we actually are required to pay by statute, by resolution, which is $84,025. If you understand all of that, it's...
It seems like a sleight of hand to me, I don't understand.
Well, it's not, I mean, it's totally legal, it's within the statute.
But it's not...
There's a certain amount that you can take.
For debt service.
Correct.
But we've decided to call it debt service and library.
Excuse me?
No, it's, it's the funding, we're, so...
Line E is debt service, it doesn't say debt service and library levy on the debt worksheet.
No, that's where you can, you have a little bit of leeway to work there. You can do the whole amount of debt service and claim that, which we did not do, or you can take somewhere in the middle, or you can take the very lowest amount. We went somewhere in the middle so that we could still cover the library. That's where we came up with the extra funds to fund the library, and it's totally within the limits.
Which was the recommendation from the auditors as well as Ellers.
Correct, we talked to, we talked to the auditors about it, we talked to Ellers about it, and, I mean, that's the only place that we could make that adjustment.
Could we get any clarification on what we have in the reserve funds?
The audit will be a presentation at the next meeting. We have, we have money, but the reserve fund is pretty much depleted.
We're talking about, because there's a library reserve fund?
The library does have...
They have, they're separate.
Yeah, and we will talk about that a little bit, but...
I mean, the only reason, the only reason I'm okay with not pushing that the, that the Village fund the entire library budget is because the library does have a fairly healthy reserve that we could pull for this year only. What we want to be really careful of is to not make this a precedent for the library because the library was underfunded for a whole lot of years, and we were finally getting to a point where I felt like the library was almost adequately, almost adequately funded, and now we're taking another huge step backwards, and I don't want that to be the precedent for us going forward. So next year, budget time...
Maybe why I'm confused, because we had $122,000 we were going to fund for the library. So we reduced that by 30-some thousand dollars, and now we're only going to fund 84 of the 122, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
And they will fund, they can fund the remainder through their reserve.
So two things changed. We decided to fund less for the library, and we changed the format of the financial statements.
We haven't decided that yet.
What?
You haven't decided that yet, that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
It's for you to decide whether that's how you want to fund the library or not.
So it's two things you're doing, not one.
No, we're doing one. Well, the funding for the library must still be changed.
You're reducing the amount, we agreed to give the library, and you're changing the format of the P and L.
Format?
And they didn't make this decision themselves, Bill. I, I came in and I talked to them, and, and I just thought that this was the best way to try and address the dollars so that we, so that we as the village, since they did have such, since the Library Board had, has a reserve that we could use, that the Village should fund at just the required amount.
And how is the required amount?
It's required by us. Do you remember when we passed those resolutions for Dane County and Jefferson County about the library? It's, if, it was what those resolutions said, that instead of us paying those tax dollar amounts to Jefferson County and Dane County, who would then turn around and give it to the library, we will give those dollar amounts that we would normally pay in taxes directly to the library. So that's where that $84,000 comes from.
That's the max we can do?
That's the minimum we can give them.
We're required, we have to pay.
Oh, all right.
And that's based on formulas set by state statute.
So we're paying 84, and then the 58's coming out of the reserve?
The rest of it's coming out of the reserve.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then what's the balance going to be in the reserve?
That's what we're proposing as a solution.
That's, yeah, that's what the solution is supposed to be.
Library's reserve.
Library, library reserve, and then the library will still have a healthy reserve, $100,000.
The library had made like $25,000 in the last three years, and they had $160,000 reserve at the end of last year. So they could have made another $20,000 this year, we don't know. I don't, do we?
I would have to look back at the, at the audit and see what that number was.
The library's going to have, if, if we're, all things being equal, it'd be $130,000.
So at least for this budget, that's, after talking with Ellers and the auditors, what we came up with a solution to this year's budget, so...
That's making sense.
It's up to you guys, I'm just offering the solution.
So basically, what we're doing here is they're dropping down what they're asking from the Village to $7,000. So, basically what we're doing here is they're dropping down what they're asking from the village to seven thousand dollars a month. And then they'll fund the rest of it.
No, they're not. The, the, we just heard from the president of the library.
They would like it.
They want us to, the, the, to fund the whole hundred and twenty-two thousand that we asked for.
Okay.
Which is originally what we as a village board and what we on the, well, a majority of us on the Audit and Finance Committee had agreed to do. And we were going to fund them at that level.
Right.
But then we found out that there was an, an error made in how we were accounting for things. And so, that whole hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the library was not accounted for at all in our expenditures. So, if we were going to fund the library at the hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, we would have to either somewhere else in the budget cut a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars worth of services or borrow for the hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in order to cover them, debt service. So, we could have put the whole hundred and twenty-two thousand under that debt service and still been well below.
No, we would have been very close to being run out of that.
Okay, so then we would have been run out of debt service if we had funded the whole amount, which is why we thought, again, since the library had that hundred and sixty thousand dollar reserve, or almost hundred and sixty thousand dollar reserve, that we would go ahead and use some of that reserve money for a one-year-only funding of the library.
Okay. It doesn't change anything that I, I already thought there. Jennifer, do you have anything that you want to provide to us as we're considering all this? Because it's really about the library.
She already did.
I know. Is there anything else that you've heard?
I would like to say that we don't know where this reserve money like came from. We're not looking to make twenty-five thousand dollars a year off of the village. That wasn't our intent ever with the budget for the library. We just want to be able to provide services. We've cut our hours, we're only open forty-two hours a week, which is about ten hours less than most of the libraries around here. And we just want the library to continue to be a strong community resource and a part of the village.
So, so the library's not getting financials historically from the village on their performance?
Based on performance?
Yeah, what you actually, what the library's actual results have been each year.
It's all part of our.
The funding is, it's through state statute, those resolutions we pass. They have formulas that tell us based on.
My question is, historically, has the village provided the library their P and L so they can see what they're really doing?
We do all of that work for them.
You'd say we don't share it with the library board?
Yes, we share them financials every month.
Yes, they.
Oh, she just said she doesn't see, she didn't know.
No, I don't think the library board ever knew we had a, and the last time I was on the library board either, we never knew we, we really had a reserve.
Well, then it's not being shared.
Or, or we don't know how to read the reports that were given because the library board, the library board is given a copy of the audit just like we get copies of the audit. So, I just think it was just something that wasn't read properly. And made note of.
So, of course, it's being shared and I, I print out monthly reports for them every month.
How close are we on our debt service limit then, the five fifteen? You said we're getting close, I thought, or did I misunderstand you?
Okay. We are like twenty-three thousand away.
And what is that?
From, from what we can put on the levy limit worksheet. It's like, it's a, it's a certain amount.
So, that.
That we can go up to.
And what happens when we get up to that number?
You're done.
That's the maximum.
That's the max you could take for that year.
So, what happens if we have more debt needing to be serviced?
We would have to have more loans, more debts out there, that kind of thing. So, it's kind of a flexible about amount because it's based on our, it's our debt, oh, what's the word? It's the debt ratio that we can take as a village. We still have more, but I mean, this is like what we have borrowed. So, it's your principal, it's your interest, which you're going to pay for the next year.
Yeah.
And that is a flexible amount because it's through bonds and things like that.
Okay.
So, and that's how Ellers has explained it to me. I'm still learning a little bit more about that myself. But instead of doing the whole amount, we want to make sure that we still have a little bit of a, a leeway there.
Yeah.
In case we need to amend the budget.
I'm guessing that number isn't going to grow a lot in the next year, or the following year, or the following year.
That, that's hard to tell. Depends on if we take a loan for something.
Each year it goes up and down depending on what we've paid off, what we pay off, and what we, what additional things we might need to take a loan on. That debt service number always changes.
Like the truck.
So, if we borrow.
The Ford Worthing.
Yeah.
If we get crazy, we borrow, we double our debt next year. Would this number double next year?
That number would.
The principal and the interest that we're going to be paying in the upcoming year, that's what that amount is.
Oh, so this isn't, when you said limit, I thought you meant.
It's not our limit on what we can borrow.
We could borrow, I'm like, oh my gosh, we're going to run out of funds.
No.
It's the limit on what we can claim on the levy limit worksheet.
It's not the limit of how much we can actually borrow and pay back.
That's quite a bit higher than that. Sometimes it's hard to explain, but, yeah.
Did we get any clarification on the, the two hundred and three thousand, the grant money that we're waiting to receive?
We did. We, we spoke with the auditors again, and I know Bill spoke with them. And we asked them, it is, it is a capital fund. So, when we receive the money, it'll go into the capital fund. And then I asked the auditors, I'm like, okay, but it came from the general fund. He goes, then you would refund it to the general fund at that point. So, it's, it's not really revenue is coming in, but we need to use it in the budget because we haven't received it, but we've already spent it.
It's been recorded on the books as a receivable. So, when he says it's going to go back to the general fund, it's going to go back to the general fund to pay off the receivable. It will not go back in as a revenue item.
No, it will not. But, since we've, I asked him about this, I said, so I know that Bill asked you about this. I said, it's going to come back in, and we weren't even talking receivables. We're talking, okay, it's a, it was a capital account expenditure that the board, I believe, decided to use reserve money to pay for because it had to be paid upfront before the grant money came in. Okay? Now, if it was a loan, then that would have come, you know, directly, you'd get it from the bank and.
The debt service.
Right, and the debt service we would claim on the levy limit worksheet. But since you decided to pay it out of the reserves, it came out of the general fund, even though it is a capital, it's a capital expenditure.
It didn't come out of reserves, it went as a accounts receivable.
Right, but it had, okay, accounts receivable, we had to pay for the whole thing upfront.
Yeah.
That came from the general fund. Your accounts receivable is what you have going to come in to, what's going to pay, you know, what people owe you.
The general fund has accounts receivable of three hundred and some thousand dollars.
And we've only received a hundred thousand of that.
From the capital fund.
But we.
The capital fund has a payable to the general fund for three hundred some thousand dollars.
And that's made by the auditors.
And, yeah, which is our financial statement. And the capital fund has a three hundred some thousand dollar receivable from whoever this money's coming from.
So, when it comes in.
It offsets the three hundred thousand dollar receivable.
But then we're going to turn around and pay it back to the general fund because that's where it came.
Which offsets that receivable, has no impact on the reserves.
Where it came from originally was from the reserves.
No.
Yes, because it, it came from our accounts.
Okay.
Came from our accounts in the village.
We're going to be.
It wasn't something that we took a loan for.
And it wasn't budgeted for.
Right.
But it was set up as a receivable.
Because we're going to receive that money back.
Yeah, not through the general fund. If it went through the general fund, it would be shown as an expense. It'd be an expense or it'd be an expenditure. It wouldn't be, and the only way it goes to the fund balances is if it's an expenditure.
That's because it even had to go through a capital expense, yes. So, it's going to come as a receivable. But when we get it, it came from the village's fund.
So, so Bill?
We, we asked, I asked the auditor specifically. I said, so when it comes in, are we going to be able to repay? Yes.
Yes.
Can't look at it as a revenue, no.
Correct.
But it's going to come in and it's going to repay what you've spent already.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, and that has nothing to do with the, the revenues in the budget?
But we haven't received it yet. Do we have to put it in there to cover the budget? And I asked him that and he said yes.
No.
Well, that's what the auditor told me.
Okay.
So, when we have the auditors come in and give the presentation, you'll ask the question how you ask it and I'll ask the question how I ask it and we'll see if we get the same answer.
So, the auditors are treating.
I was specific when I asked it, because of what you said when you were talking to him. I wanted to understand it as well, so I spoke with him as well. And Lisa was on the call as well, so.
So, they're treating it as like a, it's going to be in a reimbursement to the general fund, something like that?
That's how I understand it, how he explained it to me.
If I owed you two hundred dollars and you knew I owed you two hundred dollars, I paid you back. You wouldn't pay taxes on it, that's not part of your income. We're putting it in here as income.
Okay, well, when the auditors come.
But it's not income that we've, we've already received from taxpayers from whenever it was because it was in the reserve. It's not like we're taxing anybody on that.
No, but what we're, what's going to.
It's not part of the levy limit.
What's going to happen is our reserve's going to, we're going to go further negative in our reserve.
You already have. And.
So.
You already have, and it's like, so this needs to come back. Whoever was on the board when it was decided, you spend that all upfront instead of taking a loan for it.
And at the time, we didn't know it was going to take three years to get the bike trail finished, you know.
And get reimbursed for it.
And that's one thing we've learned and we have to be more cognizant of using debt for certain things to help us with the budget, with the levy limit worksheet.
Which is what we need to offer more of a solution when we bring it to the board. Say, you know, these are the different things that can be done. And then it's up to the board, the board decides, we don't decide.
So, it's not a, the auditor said it's not a revenue item, but you're bent on having it as a revenue item.
We'll just have to talk to the auditors.
Alright, okay, we'll, we can do that.
As we, I did take a look at the budget as a whole. You know, so we have total expenditures of two point three eight roughly million dollars. Looking at our budget, one point five six million is things we have no control over. We have no control over, to a point, police, fire, EMS, the developers' agreements we have, the liability insurance we pay, the workers' compensation. The library, you know, these are all things debt service we don't have control over. So, you know, that's what we're struggling with in the office to say, let's cut three hundred thousand dollars when we only have, you know, that difference of seven thousand, eight thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars is all wages, all equipment, all expenses, this building, everything else. You know, we are limited and you'll hear from the auditors, all municipalities are under levy limits. We're, we're not the only municipality facing these items. So, that's where he was giving us the suggestions, use debt more often because it offsets your expenses, your revenues. You can adjust the debt service, so it helps you in the long run. So, like Tammy said, the bike trail, we had to pay three hundred thousand, three hundred fifty thousand upfront. We knew that the board made that decision to do it. At that time, could we have looked and got short-term borrowing to use to pay for it? Yes, the board didn't do that. You know, there's other things that we've purchased some equipment that we maybe used money on hand. Should we have done a short-term loan for a fifty thousand dollar truck? You take a year and a day to pay it and you can then use it on your debt service. So, that's outside the levy limit instead of using reserves. But, you know, going forward, those are things that we'll have to keep in mind and, you know.
Looking to the future.
But. And, yeah.
Chris, you want?
Yeah, looking back at the, and I, I appreciate the synopsis there, but looking back at the library fund. So, I'm, I'm getting the impression that this is the minimum of what we have to pay. What is our flexibility of raising that? To at least something commensurate of what they got last year? Regardless of their, regardless of their, their, you know, money that they have, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that was reported or.
So, is there twenty thousand extra?
What is our?
The twenty thousand. That would take us about to the maximum, you know, to take it to the hundred five would pretty much take us to the maximum of the debt service that we can claim on the levy limit. So, that is an option for the board to discuss.
Right.
This was just one option, just because we knew that they had a reserve.
You know, I, I understand what you're saying Paula, that, you know, they have a certain amount, but we're taking, I think, a negative twenty percent. So, I would like to at least get close to what we provided for them last year.
I mean, I'd like to do that too. But again, that reserve is also taxpayer dollars. We aren't suppo, if, I, I think if, if this board had been more aware that the library, we were overfunding the library by twenty thousand dollars a year, that we may have either asked the library to up their services, to make it commensurate because just like we don't want to over.
We're overfunding a library who, we're paying their folks.
In the, in the past.
Minimum wage.
In the past, in the past, we must have been overfunding the library because I don't know how else that reserve would have gotten built up. So, the library just was very frugal. And that's probably why staff is so underpaid because the library was very frugal with spending any of their money.
And that, those reserves, that has nothing to do with the friends of the library?
No, no, completely separate things.
Everything is.
And now we've, we've added to the regular budget, we've added an expense item in there now going forward. So, we never have this mistake going forward to the library. Before, it was never included in like your budget. It might have been included in there and taken, but there was no line item for it. And so, now there will be going forward. So, that everybody is clear, especially me, where it has to come from.
Yep.
A line item to state that we have to pay them minimum.
We have to pay the minimum, it's up to the board.
Yeah.
How much you actually pay them. We have to pay them the eighty-four thousand twenty-five this year.
I understand what you're saying Paula with the fact that, you know, one time, but boards change. We got an election coming up here in April, nothing's guaranteed. That's why I'm always skeptical about making these decisions in the future because you don't know who's going to be on the board and all of a sudden, you know, that could be lost.
Let me just give you an example, okay? If you wanted to fund the whole hundred and twenty-two, or if you wanted to fund the one oh five, okay? The difference of that goes on your levy limit worksheet.
Right.
It's on the backside.
Gotcha.
That number increases, which increases your allowable levy.
But it is allowable, it is allowable.
It is still allowable.
Right.
But just remember, that's the taxpayers are getting taxed on that allowable levy amount.
Right.
So, that's why when we came up with the solution, we decided, well, we didn't want to maybe take the whole amount because they have a reserve. Like I said, it's, it's completely up to you guys, it's not up to me. This is just how I'm looking at it. This amount will go up, which means the taxpayer is going to get a higher tax bill.
Right. But it's.
So, instead of it going up to the max.
Fifty-six percent of Cambridge residents use the library, I think that would be. 56% of Cambridge residents use the library, I think that would be something, you know, that's over half of our population, that's something that their tax dollars-
I just wanted you to understand how that, if you decide to fund all of it, that's how it'll affect the tax bill.
Or up to 105 is all we could, under the levy, or the debt, the extra 20,000.
Yes.
Right.
Not up to the 120,000.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I wanna-
Yeah, up to the 105.
I wanna discuss the possibility of at least matching what they got last year.
Well, I'll take the flip side, and the flip of it is, we've got an $84,000 line item budget, and what I'm hearing is that there was, before we did anything, 160,000 in the reserves for the library?
They don't know, so don't look at them. Look at Tammy.
At the end of '22.
Okay, so 160 is roughly twice what their annual budget is if we funded it at 84,000.
No, no, 160 is, is about their annual budget, it's not twice their annual budget.
I mean, this is just-
It's what we give them.
Okay.
We give-
It's not-
Right, yeah.
All right.
Statutorily, we have to give them the 84,025.
Right, but they don't, they don't-
That changes every year.
Okay, I get that, but they're not aware of what this, this reserve is, they don't-
For whatever reason, no. I mean-
But just because, just because they didn't know about it, doesn't mean-
It doesn't exist.
Doesn't mean it doesn't exist, and doesn't mean that we should just impunity tell them what they need to do with that money, right?
No.
Nobody-
They are a separate statutory body within state statutes that deal with their budget.
You can only deal with what we give them, what we give them.
The fund is restricted for library use. I mean, nobody, I mean, that's all we're saying. No one's saying you can't use it for whatever they want, as long as it's for library purposes.
Completely up to the board to decide.
Yeah, so I don't know where that comment came from.
We can't tell them how to, we really can't tell them, I, I just-
If we only funded them-
Statutory-
I really misunderstood where Mark was going, so that's where that comment came from, Bill. I may have misunderstood where Mark was going.
So if we only gave them 84,025, they can decide, well, we can either cut all the hours, unless we gotta live within this budget, or they could decide to use some of their reserves. That's up to them to fund the rest.
But, but we have to be really clear, if we do that, it's gonna make it really rough next year. Becau- because you should never, you should never pay for operations out of, out of a reserve fund. And that's what we're doing.
If it all possible, $200,000.
If it all possible.
And it's a reserve we don't have in general fund, at least they have the reserve.
Well, that's what Paula's proposing.
Well, the, the other alternative, Bill, is we cut the-
But she just said something different, no?
No, she didn't. She, she agreed with that solution. That's why we, I offered that as a solution after we spoke and had a meeting, you know, what were the different options we could do. So I think maybe you're talking about the same thing, but-
But, I mean, if you're concerned about the $200,000 bill, and you think we should find that in our budget, then we take back all of the money, extra money we gave the Public Works this year, we don't do any roads, we don't do any heavy equipment improvements, and we cut staff.
Okay.
Because that's the only way that we would be able to make up those dollars.
But we're deficit spending by, the current budget is deficit spending. We're spending $200,000 more than we're bringing in. And the last three years, 20, 21, and '22, we've deficit spent hundreds of thousands a year. '23, we have no idea where we're at. And '24, now we wanna budget, we're gonna spend 200,000 more than we have in the reserves, or 200,000 more than we're gonna bring in, and hoping it'll turn out somewhere.
All right.
Hopefully the auditors can-
Well, yeah, just, so much of this is turning on the issue of the, the library.
Well, no, no, none of this is turning, what Bill is talking about has nothing to do with the library, Mark.
Well-
It doesn't, it has nothing to do with the library.
There, I guess I'm, I'm bothered by the fact that if the library has got these reserves, and they don't know about it, why don't they know about it?
I, I-
And-
I think it was simply, number one, from the past times when I've been on the library board, I don't know if anyone else here has been on the library board, the past times I've been on the library board, we never had someone sit down and explain to us what, what the audit findings really found for the library. So we never had that understanding. And quite frankly, the Village of Cambridge has not done a good job about having somebody to take care of our finances since Norma left. So, so the fact that we pay our bills has been pretty much all that we've had out of our treasury up to this point in time. So, so don't blame the library, because they didn't know where the dollars were. We understand that there, there just happens to be this reserve that we are now aware of, and I feel like rather than asking taxpayers to pay more, let's just pay, use a little of that reserve for one year to get us over, and then try again. Although Chris brings up a good point, that if, if I'm not on the board next year, then, then, then who's going to fight the battle for the library to, to get to the, at least this year's funding levels?
And I just wanna make one clarification in speaking with the auditor, even though the reserves aren't there, we have money. It's not that we don't have money. We have money to pay the bills, we have, you know, we're not in financial straits. You know, the money is there, that reserve fund, in actions the board has taken, has depleted the deserve, the reserve funds. But we have money.
For the general fund, you're talking now, not the library.
Yeah, the general fund.
So on the, let's stick with library and get that resolved, if we could, before we go back to general fund, because it's too fun. So, the previous three fiscal years, we've made $20,000 a year in the life, over 20,000 a year. In '23, I guess I would expect we're gonna make another 20,000 in the library fund. I mean, nothing's changed, right? Why would it-
There was, there was a large payout when Joan retired toward her health insurance, which was roughly 25,000, so that could have been, you know-
So they'll probably be right on budget then.
But, yeah, things change yearly.
And I know, and I know that was, when I was on the board, that was one of the things, the last time I was on the library board, that we were trying to set aside money in reserve for when Joan did buy out, sell. So that's what part of that reserve probably was intended for. Yeah, I was just explaining, because you asked a question about if they'd be over this year as well.
So, that one-time expense won't repeat again, I assume, and, so if they needed 122,000 with their budget request, if historically we run 20,000 to 25,000 favorable, we should be able, without hurting the library, knock it down to 100,000. And then we're only taking 16,000 out of the reserve, out of 160,000 dollar reserve, and that, if it stays that same run rate, that would last 10 years. That's the way I look at it. So I'm fine, I'm fine with the library fund.
Okay, all right.
So, I'm sorry, so you wanna fund the library at 100, 100,000, with 105,000 that we also funded them in 2020, 2023?
I'm fine with the proposed budget of 84 that you had put out there.
You wanna leave it at the 84?
That you put out there, yeah.
Let's say that, I mean, it was my suggestion.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I am not fine with that. I would like to make a motion to fund the library with at least the amount that we funded them from 2023.
I'll second that.
Which is 105,000 dollars.
I guess, I'll second that.
And we can discuss.
Okay.
And Mark, you were gonna take a contrary view to it, but then you got-
Yeah, well, I, you know, some of the things that get said here, I'm not gonna try to get too, too worked up over it.
I have one question, though, before you go, for the audience. 100, if you, if we did go to the 105, you said that you had cut your hours to 42 hours, what would, what would the 105,000 that you had last year do, do for you for hour-wise? Would you be able to bump those hours up?
We could potentially add additional hours, but we spent probably at least four hours going through our budget line by line, looking at our expenditures, looking at the pacing for the budget, because we wanted it to be aligned in reality.
Right.
So, but I think that we could, we could look at expanding Saturday, Saturday hours and offering another evening until at least 8 o'clock.
And increase wages?
That's, and that's-
The key part.
Because when you're, you know, you bring up a good point, Bill, Mark, Chuck, and Paula, this is taxpayer dollars, and we want, we want the taxpayer to get the best bang for their buck. And I think the library, as you stated through your statistics, 56%, is a, is a good bang for your buck here in Cambridge. So, that would be, you know, why I would want to at least, you know, yes, we, we can't necessarily go for broke with the 122 that was requested, but at least we can meet you at where you were last year. And the furnace agrees with you.
So the, if we do this, this would max, max out our debt service, love you, right?
For this.
So what are the risks, what risks comes with that?
It's-
Tammy, what are the risks for maxing out our debt service?
Well, there's no room to make very many adjustments to your budget. I mean, it's always good to have a little bit of leeway there in case you need to amend your budget.
So when Public Works, a vehicle for Public Works breaks down, we won't be able to purchase or, or get a loan out for a new Public Works vehicle?
Well, we can take loans.
We can loan, we can take loans.
Okay.
You know, the debt service and the levy limit is-
Right, I mean, you could, you could take the, the debt service, and, not positive, but you can only take up to the maximum amount, I think.
Got it.
Like, out of how many years?
I know what you're talking about.
You know, and-
So we could, we can take out, so we can have, so the number, if we did all the calculations, the number that appears here could be higher than what the higher number is, we just would only be able to claim that highest, just by statute purposes.
Where do we sit with the $90,000 over the levy limit referendum that we've got?
It's built into the levy already, yes.
All right. All right.
If we were to approve this budget, and I know we've got a motion, but if we were to approve it, is this something that can be changed once we hear from the auditors next week, or next meeting?
No, tax bills are going to be printed based on the budget we pass tonight.
You can make budget amendments after the first of the year.
Next year, but-
First quarter, right?
But tax bills will be sent out based on the levy limit worksheet, or what you pass for the budget.
And I thought we already had, well, we turned it into the newspaper.
Yes.
Right, and it's just a summary of what we sent to the newspaper, and it did say, you know, it could be subject to change, that kind of thing, so it was just, if anybody wanted to come and look at it in more detail, they could come in.
And then they could come to the public hearing today and talk about it, and then what we decide tonight is what the tax rate is gonna be based on what we decide tonight. So if we decide-
The budget will be taken with the levy limit worksheet, Tammy will do the mill rate worksheets for both counties, and they will create the tax bills based on those three things all.
But we can reduce spending after the levy limit's set. We don't have to spend the total amount.
No.
Correct? We have to spend the million?
No.
No, I mean, if we come, if our expenses are less, they're less, but-
Then it would come off on next year's levy limit worksheet, the things that were unspent. So for some reason, you know, we get an unexpected windfall somewhere.
Under levy limits, you do want to use, you know, you never go in saying, we're gonna spend less than the levy limit worksheet tells us we can spend, because that affects you the next year, and you don't make it back up.
All right, so how do we handle this? I mean, we've got a motion and a second to increase the library from 84,000 to the 105.
I guess you could take your vote and see where it ends up, and if it doesn't end up at that, then you, somebody would have to make another motion. If nobody, yeah, because you have a first and a second, so you have to take a vote.
Yeah, all right.
Well, I got a, I got one more question. So would, would we reduce the amount of money we're taking out of the reserve for the library fund, or keep the 58.7?
They decided they're gonna use the reserve.
So that, okay, I see what you're saying. So that's up to them.
No, the library will decide, do we wanna cut our budget by $20,000, or do I wanna leave our budget where it was and use the reserve funds to pay for it?
Okay, so that's up to them, I see.
Statutorily, libraries are a unique animal in Wisconsin. We are the parent municipality that hosts and sponsors the library. But statutorily, they are their own body, they have their own budget, they are in control of their own budget, their own staff, we just-
But we take care of all of the bookkeeping for that one.
But by state statute, we take care of the bookkeeping and the administrative things, but they are in charge of their budget. So as Paula was saying before, we give them the money we have to by state statute, we can give them more, but it's up to them how it is spent, and we can't dictate. We can't say, take your reserves and use it for this or that. That is their board's decision by state statutes.
Yeah, I remember that came up when it was, when it was talked about for salaries, and can we earmark this for salaries, and if we can't, it's up to the library board what they do with that.
Okay, all right.
When Carla Geller was on.
Yeah, can, can either Lisa or Tammy repeat the motion here?
Chris Breinig made the motion to fund the library at 105,000 dollars for 2024 budget. Does that sound right to you?
Sounds great.
Okay, all right.
It was seconded by Paula.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this.
Wait, or Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Breinig?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
McNally?
No. But we will be increasing this to 105, and we just have no room. So if we've got any other-
No, we can still take out loans, so we can still do everything we've always done, Mark. We can still do what we need to do, right, we can still do what we need to do to run the village. I, I think by making this vote, and I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that 56% of our, have a library card, I mean, that's, that's huge. And knowing that that service is that important to so many people in the village, I just think this is a, a good spend of taxpayer dollars.
I support the library 100%. I just-
Just not in your vote?
No, when you have reserves and you don't even know what they are, and you don't know how they were accumulated, and they're there to, to help you. I know that we're only looking at this with a year, but that has been coming on, and that's substantial, that's a material amount.
Well, I, I, right now, I can tell you probably, I, I can tell you at least one major improvement that the library needs to make, that we didn't know how we would find the money for, that now that we know we have those reserves, we're gonna be able to fix a major problem that is in the library. And that's just one major problem in the library. I'm sure there are others. I'm sure there are others.
You know, they had issues with HVAC.
We, HVAC, we've got an issue with, with the water in the bathroom at the, at the front of the library. So, so if the board chooses to, now we've got some options to actually repair some things that are in that building. So.
And that's support.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. So that takes care of that part of it.
Now, Bill, you had another question on general fund, right?
Yeah. What's gonna happen is they're gonna take the 200,000 out when they do the budget, a year and a half now, whenever that gets done, and we're gonna be another 200,000 in the hole in our general fund. We'll probably be, you know, end of this year, we'll probably be 300,000 to 400,000 in the hole, in my opinion. Clearly Tammy disagrees, so we disagree to disagree at this point.
Hopefully.
Well, I look forward to the auditorium coming and.
Yeah.
If I'm wrong, I will, I'll admit that I'm wrong, but that's how I asked it to the auditors and.
I have a question on LRIP. Is that not happening?
No.
What? LRIP grant.
We didn't get it.
We didn't get it? Son of a gun.
We're on the list.
On the list. Huh.
Yep, son of a gun.
Yeah.
It's not an every year kind of thing, it's usually every, every other year.
For the roads, the grants for the road repairs? Okay. But we had everything in on time and, yeah, that looked like Todd did a good job, thanks Chris for.
Didn't we get something this year, though?
Yes.
Didn't we get an LRIP this year?
No, that was, that was last, yeah, Chris got a, a good chunk.
Highlighted line?
Yeah, so it looks like we're not.
It's all zeros all the way across.
Right, they, they denied it.
We didn't.
Every year.
Possibly when the budget was done, we didn't have results yet. They just made the decision last week on, you know, so if the budget was passed, a lot of grants you don't know until later. You know, next meeting we'll be talking about the foundation grant. We don't know if we're gonna get anything, what the amount's gonna be, so oftentimes you can't.
What Bill's saying, though, is if you look at this one in, in our government.
Oh, I see, for the previous year.
It's zero all the way across.
Yeah.
Every line, that was zero.
There should be.
If you look at this sheet, Lisa.
Oh, in the budget itself.
Yeah, where it's highlighting the LRIP grant.
22, it should've been like at least 12,000.
I thought it'd been a couple of years since you've gotten it.
No, it was, no, we did Johnson Street.
Well, and like I said.
It could've been moved into the.
This is before the audit was done, that I printed these out.
Okay.
So, year 2022 at least, now that I'm done doing all the journal entries and things, that could change.
And I'm wondering if it went from the general into capital because the, it was a capital project, so it may have been moved into the capital.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm pleased to see that the 30,000 that we have here for roads, Chuck, that's, that's staying on here.
Yeah, no, without the LRIP, we're gonna need that.
Okay. Which road is that for?
Allen Street.
Allen and, Allen's the primary.
Okay.
Then there was Highland and Charlesburg.
I thought Charlesburg was a no.
It's a no, but.
Charlesburg was a no for the LRIP grant, but Charlesburg is a.
One of the top three.
Yeah, one of the top three.
I'd be fine if it goes back to, to gravel, I'm fine with that. I live on Charlesburg, so it's fine.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, we're.
Two more years of plowing.
Got buddy, bud.
I don't know that works.
Okay. Is there anything else that we see on the budget for 2024 that we wanna talk about?
I guess I just remind people that a, a budget is a goal. It isn't a set in stone. And we make adjustments throughout the year depending on things that happen and hope that it, it all comes out in the end. Like when, when our former treasurer died and we had to hire outside professional services to do some of the accounting, we made, we made the decision, let's go ahead and do that because most likely the dollars we're not paying out in salary are gonna equal or about equal, we're hoping, what we're paying in professional services. We make those hard decisions all the time and we just do the best we can with the information we have to keep things running.
Okay. All right. With the one change that we have here on the library, are we prepared to move ahead then in approval of this budget?
In the resolution in front of you, the number for the tax levy adopted would switch to $1,629,145.
Okay. 1,629?
145.
Okay. Okay, I, I.
On the, on the adopting, oh, never mind, I was looking, reading something wrong, so never mind.
I'll make a motion to approve the Village of Cambridge Resolution 2023-11 in the amount of $1,629,145.
I'll second.
Question on that document? So, section, I just want clarification. Section two and section three refer to the year of 2023. Are we paying taxes for 2023 or are we paying taxes for 20, 2023 taxes that will be used in 2024?
Yep, so the taxes are based on your property value on January 1st of 2023.
Got it.
You get the bill in December payable in 2024.
Okay.
Yes, as I was doing the resolution, I was doing those numbers in my head.
Thank you.
Reading the right ears down.
Because I noticed 2024 was up above and I'm like, all right, is this one down below supposed to match? All right, thank you for the clarification. That's all I had.
Okay.
So the, the, on the very top of the resolution?
It does say 2023.
It should say 2024.
And we have to reprint this with the new number in it, so. Mark, you'll have to step in to sign this later, once we reprint it.
Okay, other questions? All right, we've got a motion and a second, I'll ask for roll call, please.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Chris.
No.
Breinig.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer, McNally.
Yes. Gotta do it, but I will be very curious as to auditors next meeting when they come in and talk about some of this. All right. I have nothing pithy to share with you, and these are budgets, and it's, it's just tough everywhere. And I appreciate all the work that's been done by the audit and finance committee as well as the village staff. So, thank you, and perhaps we can, in the future, do a better job of sharing with groups what they might have available and.
That is the goal.
Helping them.
We may comment, they are not the only group with the reserves, but that's a different discussion.
Right, okay, let's move on. I'm gonna bring up item 8B, Village Ordinance 2003, is that supposed to be 2023?
Yeah, 2023.
And it's regarding our comp, our comprehensive plan.
Yep, so as you know, Plan Commission has been working with, MSA was hired to do our update on the comprehensive plan. In November 13th, a public hearing was held before Plan Commission. They did pass a resolution recommending final approval of the comprehensive plan. So final step is then for Village Board to make the final approval.
I'll make a motion to approve Village of Cambridge Ordinance 2023-02, an ordinance to update and adopt the comprehensive plan of the Village of Cambridge, Dane and Jefferson Counties, Wisconsin.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion, questions?
So I missed the last couple of meetings. I know there were some concerns about the economic development, there were some shop owners, did, did we make any changes in that, in that section?
They did make some, take into account some of the comments and make some changes.
Okay, so that was all taken into consideration, okay.
And, and again, a comprehensive plan isn't something set in stone, it doesn't say we are absolutely doing this at every point along the way.
It's guidelines.
It's guidelines, right, or, or framework, really.
To use for planning purposes and so forth, yeah.
Is that an annual thing, that, is it done every year, like?
No, at least every 10. 20.
What?
For a comprehensive one is 20, but don't we update it?
It should be updated every 10.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've made a, our last one was, the first one we did when it was instituted in state statute, it's coming up to 25 years. We have made a couple amendments over the years, Plan Commission has reviewed it, but it was now time to do a complete review and update of the plan.
I thought it was a nice plan, well done.
MSA did a good job, I mean, we.
The whole team did, I think.
We had it up on the wall, on the, the presentation, we went through every neighborhood to make sure every use was appropriate to that neighborhood and what's, what's coming down the pipeline in the future, and, and we had citizen input, shop owner input, so I, I feel like we have a good product here.
Did a survey.
The survey was, was, that was successful, so, uh, there's a lot of work that went into it. Oh, yeah.
I just wanna know who's the first person gonna build the auxiliary building for their mother.
Yeah, right.
I keep, I keep telling my mom, mom, I might get down to Cambridge, yeah, we'll build you a little she shed in the backyard.
I think it's gonna set us up for the next, you know, 10, 20 years, we've got some good guidelines here.
Yeah.
One of the things that we baked into this recipe that wasn't there was the idea that, that comp plan will be looked at yearly.
Oh, oh, right, yeah, we are gonna look at it.
So I, I'm not sure how we'll do that, I know that my predecessor, when we had done it, if I'm not mistaken, he kinda parceled that out, and I don't know if that's the right way.
The Plan Commission has done that twice. I think it's, it would go to Plan Commission, kind of look at goals, have we met goals, what have we done to try to reach these, going through individual sections. We're not going to amend the plan, it's a process to do an amendment to the plan. To say, our population has gone up by 50 people, we should change this, or, you know, we have extra stores now, you know. So looking at those minute details isn't the gist of a comprehensive plan and not worth the effort to be amending it. But look, are we meeting our goals, are we, you know, new subdivisions coming in, are we looking at what's set up in the comprehensive plan? Are we following it? You know, more of general overview, and are we using this as an appropriate planning tool?
Right. Yeah, they kinda set us up so we can get use out of it. It was to get a bang for our buck, that, that was great, too. Kinda set us up with a battle rhythm every year and how we can implement it. It was good.
Okay, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of.
It's an ordinance, so let's do a roll call.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Chris.
Uh, yes, I guess would be the right response.
Breinig.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer, Hollenbeck.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, comp plan passes.
Yeah, I think it's, goes without saying, Eric did a lot of, a lot of work on that, too.
Eric was awesome.
Shout out for spearheading that, so, and MSA.
Well, Plan Commission really kinda dug in on this one, so. But, all right, um, let's move on to item 8C, our Village Board vacancy.
Trustee Phelps' seat does go through April of 2025. In the past, we have put an ad out asking those interested to submit their letter of interest. My thought was if we put this out, we could ask to have them back by January 4th to possibly take action at our first meeting in January to fill that seat.
Yes, let's do that.
Has anyone showed interest?
Yes. And it'd be great to have another woman on board.
Yeah. Cool.
Yep, so, you know, we haven't posted it yet, so.
Are you making a motion, Paul?
Oh, do I need to make a motion on it, or is it just?
To post it, to publish it and post it, you know, we'll also put it on the website, but.
All right, I'll make a motion to post the vacancy on the Village Board for, for interested parties to apply, to have staff do that for us. And so that we can make a decision in, at the first meeting in January.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please, so you can come by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, you know what you need to do, Lisa? Okay, moving on, unfinished business, 9A, Fire Commission update.
I've been sending a lot of correspondence through Lisa to share with the rest of the board so I can facilitate answering those questions, but.
I have one question.
Right now, we had a meeting planned for tomorrow night at 6:30, but I was just told before this meeting that there may not be enough people to attend that are refusing to attend, so that might be pushed out to December 15th. And that was advertised two meetings ago that we would have a meeting in December 15th. Other than that, that is pretty much all I have really to report, I mean, it's.
Chris, if there, if, based on the email that Dave Schroeder sent.
Yes.
And he indicated that he thinks there should be no meetings until January?
End of January.
Which my question would be, why can the Fire and EMS Commission totally abdicate their ability to, their, their responsibility to do their job and take care of the things they need to take care of by not meeting for, you know, two months? So, knowing that the December meeting is still planned, I, are you concerned that there's gonna be a push to have that one?
Well, my concern is, like tomorrow's meeting, we had an agenda already planned, but we found out we might not have a quorum. But Lisa, if you can clarify this, we could still have a meeting, we just can't take any votes, right? We can have a information, we can still hear from the public, we can still do, you know, I think our treasurer right now is going through the books and find, finding anomalies that are out there. We can share that with the public so as to be transparent with what, what the findings are. I personally think we should have as many meetings as we need to have to answer the questions that you guys deserve. And now I saw that the Oakland Board didn't approve their, the commission budget as well. So we, we need to, and that's the two of the largest, you know, contributors to that budget, we need to facilitate answers to our boards.
What about the other municipalities, you know, did they approve or, up or down, you don't know?
Rockdale meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Rockdale meets tomorrow, I have no clue on Christiana or Lake Mills. So, I, I'm not a, a fan of pushing it out. And, you know, then January will roll around and then next it'll be, well, let's just hold off until election time.
Why do they not meet?
He doesn't want the things talked about that.
Who's this?
Dave Schroeder?
Yeah.
So what, where's Mark Cook? Where's he been?
Convowest.
Okay. So Dave's been.
And Dave's the pro tem, I guess?
For one meeting, he was appointed.
He was pro tem for one meeting, I don't know why he thinks he's in charge, then.
He's not, so, I was pro tem for a meeting.
Yeah, I saw that.
So, it's, it, I, I honestly think the best way forward for us to get any kind of movement is to, you know, somehow. somehow our next meeting, whoever's in charge, we need to mandate an audit. Not like an audit or, you know, something like an actual audit. And, yeah, it's going to be a tax burden for the municipalities, but we need, especially with what our treasurer is finding, these anomalies that she's finding, we need some kind of an audit.
I think the municipalities would approve using reserve dollars to pay for an audit because that would be a good use of the taxpayer dollars.
There's just too many unanswered questions and.
Is Sheila the treasurer? Is, if you guys don't have meetings, is she still going to be able to sign the checks and get everyone paid appropriately?
She's having difficulty even doing that.
So are people being paid?
I believe so. I think Mark Cook is still facilitating that.
Or someone is stamping on his behalf.
Again, I wish I could give you more clear, concise answers.
No, I appreciate that.
I can only give you what.
Just worry someone to think maybe the EMTs aren't getting paid and they quit coming to work.
We'd be here if they.
The union would allow that.
Yeah.
The union would be. But that's from a commission standpoint. I'll just, you know, take any more questions you might have. That's where we sit right now. I think, right now, from my understanding and from correspondence that I've had Lisa share with you, there was a legal counsel that was hired by Dave Schroeder to investigate Sheila Palencas and myself.
How can?
I don't know who was paying for that legal counsel.
He better be paying for it himself because how can he do that on? He cannot hire an attorney on behalf of the Fire and EMS Commission on his own. He can't do that.
Yeah, that's, and he can't. And I don't think we should have to incur that burden to pay that. I mean, that makes, no, I've talked to Jane about that through Lisa and, you know.
And I believe Jane said he told her he was hired by the commission.
Yeah. The commission as a whole.
But the commission as a whole didn't hire him because if he did, I'd like to see where that is in a meeting and where the dollars for that are coming out because I'm pretty sure that wasn't budgeted for. So that means it has to come out of reserves, and anything coming out of reserves has to be approved by the five municipalities.
Yes. So I'll keep doing what I promised you guys.
Thank you.
You're upholding the IGA, right?
That's it. That's it.
That's what we asked you to do.
I didn't know it would be so hard.
It's unbelievable.
It absolutely is. So thank you, Chris, for continuing the.
Mark, any questions?
No, no. I've shared enough here in the past, and I just.
Bill, you got all the answers you needed from the fire department?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they were.
Standpoint?
Yeah, they were very corporate. Yeah.
EMS?
Haven't seen anything.
Did you ask them the same?
Yeah.
Does everything look squared away with the fire department's financials?
Yeah, they do, they do a good job.
Good.
But the EMS haven't provided anything to you yet?
Well, they provided their budget worksheet, which was, but not. I mean, we all know they're trying to get, or saying they're trying to get previous financials. So supposedly, they're coming, but as you know, they're not.
Numerous times I've asked for the commission's budget comparison in their year-to-date and so forth and have received no reports.
Mark Cook said when I asked, said they don't have it yet, so.
Chris, my only concern is, can you just make sure everyone's getting paid appropriately?
Yeah, definitely.
If there's not going to be meetings and, you know.
Checks are still being cut. We've received water and sewer payments. We've, you know.
I didn't know if they had to be approved at the commission meetings or what.
They're supposed to be.
Yeah, they are supposed to be the line item.
Just like you guys do.
Right, that's what I, that's my concern. Okay.
It's unfortunate it went so sideways.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a situation where, to get to your point here, Chuck, I'm not going to tell you the merchant, but they were owed a substantial sum of money. And then there was, well, sent the bill, but then this particular department was like, well, no, that should be getting paid by somebody else. And this thing turned into a four-month collection, and they weren't getting paid, and they called me. And so I put a phone call in and to, I must have talked with Mark Cook. And I just said, are you aware of this? And he wasn't, but he did get on it right away. And as far as I know, there will be a check. I wouldn't have got involved, but I was asked by a local business. It's just, I understand how it can happen, but it's just unfortunate. So, you know, your concern is warranted. And I don't like seeing this, but that's another issue, so. All right, thank you for the report, Chris. Okay, moving on, correspondence. Don't see anything. So let's move into questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items. Water revenue bond, December 12th.
Others will be here to.
Okay, I have also State Representative Barbara Dietrich will be here just to give us an update. And I try to do that with others. Kate McGinnity is not on here, but I had asked her. She is not running again, and, but just to tell us where she's at. You know, she stepped down with Dane County. Let's move on to canceling item C under 11, canceling the December 26, 2023 meeting. And Bill runs. Do we want to wait and talk about this at the next meeting?
Yeah, it will be on the next agenda.
All right, so we all know that we will not be meeting. And then Cambridge Foundation request.
So if any of you have suggestions for Cambridge Foundation, we will be doing our request in December. I know one thing we had talked about was the flooring in here. Upstairs, Serginian is coming to do a estimate next week. But any other requests, please? You can get them to me so we have a list to decide on at that meeting. What we will be asking for this year.
Because we have to have those in by 12:31. All right. Bring them down.
Yeah, L.B. K Park would be great. Formally submit that now?
We did last year.
I know.
That was one of our requests, but, yeah, we can do that again.